It is six o'clock PM, so we'll try to get started here. I know we don't have a quorum on the dais because people are getting some food, but we will, we do have a quorum in the building, and so we will get going. Are we recording?
Recording in progress.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome, oh, and it's a work session, we don't need a quorum. Welcome, everyone, to the August 27th, 2024 work session of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Muir, to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is an exciting time for us to be here on this topic. And because this whole project is a partnership between library, Parks and Recreation, I thought it would be a great kickoff to show you a little bit of summer fun. Summer fun ended on Friday, and we had a very successful year. And our staff put together just a real cute one-minute video of summer fun. I'm going to try and play it. And if the sound doesn't come on, there's words written on, the words are written on the screen, so. So, just a good reminder of what we do in the community and why some of these conversations are so important. The staff really does such a great job over the summer that it's fun to be at this point and see. We did 134 total activities this year in summer fun, and we had over 4,500 people in attendance at those events. I know there's a lot of people in the room that helped with those events, too, so thank you for your help, and special thanks to the summer fun staff. So, having said that, the real reason why we're here tonight is to talk about the next phase of the Culture, Parks and Recreation Bond. And to do that, we've had a team that includes some of the external-facing activities that we've been doing, but we've also gotten together with some sort of inner-working team conversations that involved Jennifer Quayar and our financial advisor and our bond counsel. And we wanted to follow up. The last time you heard about this topic was the joint meeting with the school board, and that was their financial advisor gave you a quick overview. And we wanted to introduce you to the team that we have put together, and it really is an amazing team. They've done great things all over the state, and they've already given us some amazing insight into how we might navigate the next eight months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Duncan Brown, and he is going to introduce his team. And of course, Jennifer Quayar's been at our side for this, along with the financial team. So Duncan, I'll let you introduce your team and take it from here.
All right. Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My name's Duncan Brown. I'm with a firm called PFM, which is an independent financial advisor to local governments. I'm based in our Portland office, and I lead our work with the city of McMinnville, as well as other cities and special districts throughout the state and elsewhere in the Northwest. I'm actually the only one from my team on this call, so that may be the only introduction that I can give. I know we do have the city's bond counsel on as well, who is also part of the broader finance team. So maybe I'll ask Gulgan if she can introduce herself before we dive into the slide deck.
Yeah, thanks, Duncan. So, hi all, I'm Gulgan Orr, I'm bond counsel to the city. And I am not part of this presentation, Duncan is doing it all on his own, but I am here in case any legal questions come up while you're hearing from Duncan about the financial side of the bond issue.
Great. And I mentioned financial advisor, bond counsel. I'll talk a little bit about what those terms mean and kind of what our respective roles are here in a moment. Not sure I have sharing, screen-sharing capacity or capability right now. Is that something we can?
Duncan, you're a co-host, so you should be able to.
Should be able to. Ah-huh. Oh. Clearly Zoom is not my.
I can pull it up, Duncan, if that would, oh, there you go.
Figure it out. We use Microsoft Teams, so Zoom took me a minute, but thanks for your patience. So I have, we put together some slides here to talk a little bit about how bonds work, what bonds are, some steps in the process, who's involved. Again, I understand there was a joint meeting with the school board a few weeks ago, and so some of this may be a little duplicative, but hopefully it provides some background on how general obligation bond measure might work for McMinnville. I'm happy to entertain questions or comments along the way. I'll also try to save some room at the end, or save some time at the end, to address questions that may come up as well. And Gulgan is not part of this conversation, but I would invite her to chime in as appropriate.
I will feel free to chime in. Thank you, Duncan.
So maybe I'll start with, what are bonds? And again, some of this may be a little duplicative with what the council's heard previously, but a bond is a loan. And we call it, we call it bonds, I'm not really sure why we call it bonds, but unlike, say, a home mortgage where you have a single institution that lends money to an individual or family. With municipal bonds, you typically have multiple lenders buying a chunk of that loan, and the borrower is a local government. Municipal bonds, municipal borrowing is typically done on what we call a tax-exempt basis, and that means that the interest paid on those bonds is exempt from federal and state income taxes. And because the investor doesn't have to pay those, pay income tax on that interest income, they're willing to accept a lower interest rate than they would otherwise, and that benefits the borrower. That means that the local government that's issuing the bonds, that's borrowing the money, will pay a lower rate than they would have absent that tax-exempt status. However, there are circumstances where the bonds, or a small portion of the bonds, may not be tax-exempt, and that's not uncommon. General obligation bonds in particular are a very strong, a very credit-worthy type of borrowing. Unlike a home mortgage where the bank, where its security is the home, the real estate, that's sort of what's backstopping the loan. In this case, the backstop is an excess property tax levy. And that's approved by voters with 50% plus one approval. And that, we call it an excess property tax levy because it's really outside any constitutional limits. So it is unlimited as to the rate or amount. It's a very strong pledge, and investors really like that pledge. It's also very narrow. It cannot be used to do anything except pay principal and interest on the bonds, on the, pay back that borrowed money. I'll talk a little bit about, well, maybe I'll pause there just before I dive into the different parties involved. The questions about bonds or general obligation bonds, again, I know that's been covered a lot.
Yeah, we have a couple on the dais. Start with council president.
Duncan, just a point of clarification, on the 50% plus one voter approval, that's just of the people that vote in that election, or that's of eligible registered voters?
That is, that's a good question. That's of the participants in that election. There is a turnout requirement as well. There is a 50% turnout requirement.
Duncan, am I allowed to correct?
Yes, please do. Getting technical.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, I love when I know something Duncan doesn't know because it happens so rarely. So for May and November elections, you only have to have 50% plus one of the people who turn out vote. But for the other elections, you would have to have at least 50% of registered voters turn out, plus 50% of those folks vote. So you'll see almost no local governments go out for a GO bond, other than in a May and November election.
Okay, and it can be any May or November election? It doesn't have to be in a primary year?
That's right, yeah, any May or November election.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions at this time? I think we're ready to move on. Thank you.
So we'll walk through a little bit about the different roles and responsibilities here. We've been talking, we were just talking about the voters. Obviously, they are a very key party, and their responsibility in this context is to consider the ballot measure and if they so choose to approve it with 50% plus one. The council is the body that sends that bond measure and puts it on the ballot in the first place. And we'll talk a little bit about kind of the timeline there in just a minute. After the election, if the bonds are approved, if the ballot measure is approved, the council will also be asked to adopt subsequent resolutions that authorize the actual issuance of the bonds. And that sounds a little, it sounds like kind of an extra step. The voters already approved the bonds, so why does council then kind of have to prove it, authorize them again? But those resolutions are really specific to each transaction. So there are a couple of different steps before you actually get to a point of being able to execute a bond transaction. Those are the two real formal responsibilities of the council, are to send the measure to the ballot and then to authorize, to adopt one or more resolutions that authorize the bonds themselves. They may be asked, it's also common for a governing body to be asked or given an opportunity to review something like a prospectus. We call it a preliminary official statement, and that is the document that municipal government shares with prospective investors that describes the bonds and the borrower, and gives them an opportunity to understand what they may be investing in. Council would not be asked to authorize that. It's not something that comes, that is presented as an action item, but it is fairly common for governing body to, again, be given an opportunity to review that before it's published. And then staff is really, as they are currently and have been, the liaison between the council and other members, the external members of the finance team, bond counsel, financial advisor, some of the other parties that we'll talk about in a minute. And they administer and execute that transaction within the parameters adopted by council in that bond resolution. So if council authorizes the issuance of bonds, they'll typically set some parameters, some bounds around kind of the nature of that transaction, and then staff goes and executes that, working with all the other parties. Again, I'll invite Gulgan to chime in here because I don't want to put words in her mouth, but bond counsel is a specialized external legal firm, law firm, that has a variety of responsibilities in a transaction. They will typically help draft the election resolution, what authorizes the measure to go to the ballot, as well as the bond resolutions after the election that authorize the actual transactions themselves. It's fairly common for bond counsel to serve in another role, we call disclosure counsel. In that capacity, they help prepare and coordinate that prospectus, that preliminary official statement that I mentioned. And along the way, they'll give general legal advice, recommendations about how the bonds are structured and the plan of finance, ensuring that the transaction is consistent with state law and consistent with the federal tax code where applicable. And they'll provide opinions to that effect at the close of the transaction. Gulgan, did I miss anything?
No, you did a great job, Duncan.
It's great, thank you. And then the financial advisor will, as our name suggests, provide financial advice along the way. We are a regulated entity, and we'd have a fiduciary responsibility to our clients, including the city. So we provide advice in the city's best interest as far as the size, structuring, the timing of different bond sales. We help the city apply for a credit rating and sort of generally help bringing the transaction across the finish line. Some other parties that are not represented in this meeting this evening, but are also critical to the process, the rating agency, I mentioned this a minute ago, again, similar to a home mortgage where the lender is going to review your personal credit score, scores. Investors in municipal bonds will look at the credit rating of the city or other government that's issuing the debt. These obviously don't, the scale is a little different than a personal credit score, but it's a similar concept. And the city currently has a credit rating from Moody's Ratings, and again, we'll talk about that momentarily. There's also a paying agent, which is a commercial bank, a corporate trust institution. They make sure that you don't have to write 100 different checks to 100 different investors. You send a single wire to a single financial institution, and they're the ones who actually pay all the individual investors after the bonds have been closed. On the day of, when the bonds are sold, they will actually be sold first to an underwriter. That's an investment bank that will purchase the bonds from the city and then resell those bonds to individual investors. And those individual investors are typically institutions. Insurance companies are big buyers of municipal bonds. But they also include individuals. Some individuals will buy a small piece, and some individuals, high net worth individuals may buy a lot of tax-exempt bonds because of the favorable tax treatment. I mentioned the credit ratings. The city does have an existing credit rating of AA3 from Moody's, which is one of the major credit rating agencies. That's the fourth highest rating that Moody's assigns. I've listed some of the strengths and weaknesses that Moody's identified in its most recent review on this page. I would offer a caveat that these are not recent observations. Moody's has not formally reviewed the city since its last bond issue, which was in 2018, so six years ago. So this is a little dated. Theoretically, Moody's sort of monitors the city's credit every year, but in practice, it's been quite a while since they've actually reviewed the city's credit. And there are some factors that could lead to an upgrade, could lead to a downgrade. If voters approve a bond measure, we would work with city staff to evaluate kind of the best way to put the best foot forward in any credit rating application to Moody's or any other rating agency.
How many, you said were the, this is the fourth highest rating? Out of how many ratings?
Good question. So the highest rating is AAA, and then below that, I probably should have included a table here, it goes in categories. So there's AA1, AA2, AA3. Then there's the single A category, then there's the triple B category. So that's, that's 10 ratings in what we call the investment grade spectrum, so I guess four out of 10. There are other ratings below the triple B category that are non-investment grade. So there's actually much, there's a whole universe that we don't typically deal with because local governments tend to be, you know, because they're not going anywhere, they're not, they can't go anywhere. We're typically dealing with investment-grade credits, but of that universe, AA3 is, I guess, four out of 10.
So if we were putting that in the context of private credit, and you're on like the 450 to 820 credit score scale, where would you put that? You know, 740 and above is tier one, A-plus credit, that gets you the best rates in the automotive sector. 650 to 720 is tier two. 600 to 650 is tier three?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I'm not sure that there's sort of a direct equation, but I'd probably, you know, probably say in that tier two space.
Thank you.
And I would note that each rating agency has its own methodology, and I haven't listed it here, but much of what goes into a credit rating is outside the local government's control. It's things like your tax base, it's things like the revenue-raising flexibility afforded under state law, it's things like how is PERS doing? So there are things within your control, within other local government's control. There are also things that are just sort of part of your credit, but also not really, at least not directly, within your control.
May I interrupt for just a second? Adam, excuse me. According to Wikipedia, A3 qualifies as rated as high-quality and very low credit risk, prime dash one, best ability to repay short-term debt. All of the top four fall on that prime dash one, best ability to repay short-term debt. So just, that's what Wikipedia states it as.
Does tax, percentage of tax collection, you know, that's not default or delay, does that figure into our Moody rating as well? Our property tax collection rate, I guess, would be?
Yeah, it, it, it's one of those things that if it were really bad, it would probably be noteworthy. If it's relatively high, there's not, you're not going to get extra points for sort of being the, being slightly higher than your neighbors. It's sort of like, you know, the referees in a sports game of some kind. You only really notice it if it's, you know, if they do a bad job. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah.
And that's particularly true, given that delinquencies in Oregon are, you know, shared at a county level, so it's generally not an area of focus.
I think we're ready to move on. Thank you.
So we'll talk a little bit about the timeline here, and again, I know this was covered at the joint meeting a few weeks ago. For the May election, and I'll, I'm not going to go through each item on here because it's on the page, but the, really, the key date here for the May 20th election is that February 28th deadline for filing the ballot title with the county. And so sort of backing up from that, that would have the council considering an election resolution sometime, really not later than earlier in February. And sort of backing up even further, that means probably starting to draft that even a little before that. You can, we're kind of, I guess, right now in that very first row, which is the planning stage, and you can see the response, there are a number of cooks in the kitchen here as far as the responsibilities. And that, but in the next few months, if the council wishes to target that May 20th election, we want to start drilling down and narrowing down the ask in anticipation of that February 28th deadline. So I'll talk through a few considerations for kind of how that measure might be crafted and just some general observations about ballot measures. One is that voters, for any bond measure, for any general obligation bond measure, they will be asked to approve at maximum and not to exceed principal amount of bonds, face value of the bond measure. That will come with some estimates about the levy rate and the impact to the taxpayer, but those are estimates. Those are not what is being approved. What's being approved is the dollar amount to be borrowed. Typically, it will also come with a sort of a maximum term for each bond measure, and that's, that applies to each series of bonds. So if, there's an example listed here, 25-year term would apply to, if it's applied to two series of bonds with a gap in between, is actually a little longer than 25 years. And then I have a bullet here about interim financing options, and again, Gulgan, feel free to chime in here because some of this is more in the bond counsel arena, but there are, there is some capacity to, generally speaking, for local governments to reimburse themselves with, for prior expenditures, for expenditures related to the project that were incurred before the bonds were sold. And there are a few ways to address that. But I know I'm probably pushing my time here, so I'll keep going. After the bond sale, or after the bond election, rather, it's generally about three months to get from start to finish on an actual bond sale. And that typically starts with the bond resolution to be adopted by council. I mentioned there is a resolution after the election, and that's this resolution. That delegates authority to city staff to actually execute the transaction within certain parameters. The bulk of the time in this, in this process is really the preparation of that preliminary official statement. That's often managed by disclosure counsel or bond counsel acting as disclosure counsel, but most of the actual work really comes from the city staff, and that's putting together a whole narrative and package of information about the city for investors to consider. And that also includes, that kind of dovetails with the application to the rating agency for that credit rating. I've mentioned, I mentioned upfront the treatment of municipal bonds as tax-exempt. I should note that tax-exempt bonds generally limited to funding three years of project costs, so for either a very long construction period or a package of projects that stretch longer than three years, that may involve either multiple series of bonds issued staggered over time or the use of taxable debt. Taxable debt might also be part of the equation if there's the potential for what we call private use of some of these facilities. And that's, again, that's more of a legal definition, it's a little technical perhaps for this, for this conversation, but taxable debt is more flexible than tax-exempt debt, particularly when we're looking at things, at spaces that may involve, may involve food vendors, or may involve long-term tenants. So that, those types of things, again, are things we talk about both upfront and sort of along the way as far as the structure of the bonds. There is a limit, a statutory limit to the city's general obligation bond capacity. Based on the dollar amounts that I think are in question, you would still be below that, that limit. And as far as timing goes, just because general obligation bonds are paid from property tax levies, from a new property tax, new excess property tax levy, we just need to be mindful of kind of where we are in the fiscal or tax year with respect to the timing of any bond issue. It's 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 easiest to do that kind of at the end of one fiscal year or very early in in the following. It gets a little more complicated if you try to issue general obligation bonds in like January. Not to say it can't be done, it's just makes things perhaps a little more complicated. And all else being equal, it's, I think, borrowers, issuers of general obligation debt are generally incentivized to sell those bonds as quickly as they as they can within the other limits that we described earlier. Partly just to kind of lock in rates and not not and avoid movement in rates, in borrowing rates down the road, as well as to potentially reinvest those proceeds and get a little interest earnings as well. And and this is, I think, my final slide. This is a very simplistic example of what a $152 million bond issue could look like. On top of the city's existing general obligation bonds, this chart shows the annual payments with the blue and green representing the city's existing general obligation debt, the orange representing a hypothetical 2025 bond issue with a 20 year term. And I've listed on the right some variations that that might change how this looks. Again, it might be staggered into broken up into multiple series. It might have a longer term than the 20 years specified here. Some borrowers structure their bonds with payments that go up, say, 3% annually to kind of try to keep that levy rate consistent as opposed to just level payments each year. There may be a space for a taxable series of bonds in here somewhere. And and there's really no reason that, there's no structural reason that that bonds have to be have level annual payments like a home mortgage. There's a lot more flexibility to kind of shape and consider existing debt in terms of determining each year's payment. So it's not uncommon, for instance, in this circumstance, it wouldn't be unusual to see slightly lower payments in those years where the city has existing payments on its outstanding bonds. So I've covered quite a bit, but I think I'm still under time, so would welcome questions.
Great, thank you. We do have time left.
There is another part of the presentation. After you're done with Duncan.
Understood. Do you have, do we have questions from the dais at this time? Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, and we will move on to the next part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan, and thank you, Golgin, for being here. It's a good team. I'm looking forward to continuing the work on this. I'm going to share my screen.
Are the consultants staying on for continued questions throughout the work session?
I think I think they'll be here. Yeah, we have, we also have Praxis on the, in the meeting, if there are any questions that come up related to that.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm Susan Muir. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, and the last time we were before you on this project was back in May. And at that time, it was a work session when we first had the results of our initial poll that came back from the community, and so as you could tell from the previous presentation, we've turned a bit of a corner. We've spent the summer doing some outreach and education and also working on some of the technical information that you just heard about. So since we saw you last, probably one of the most important things is we've named the project, the Culture Parks and Recreation Bond. That may sound familiar to you. That was one of the categories in the dollars and cents exercise that we did that meant a lot to the community, and so thank you, Noel. That was seemed like it locked and loaded right into being the name of the bond. And we also did some branding, so you can see Noel put together some graphics for us that will make it notable that this is the project that we're working on. One of the things we've also been doing is we've been talking with you all a lot about the why. And a lot of the why that we've been talking about is the condition of the buildings or the size of the amenities that the community wants, or how many people we heard from in a survey. And one of the things that we've shifted towards, and I'll talk a little bit about this when I get to the viewpoints article, is what's resonating with our community. And some of the things that we're seeing and hearing about is the the length of time these buildings have gone without updates. So moving away from the what does the roof look like and really looking at what are we doing for our community? In reality, it's been almost 40 years since either the Aquatic Center or Community Center were last improved, and there's been no additions or expansions on those two facilities. As a matter of fact, we would not be able to do them on the Community Center because there's really no space there. The population of McMinnville has doubled in size since the last time something happened 38 years ago. And we've talked about this a little bit, parts of the Aquatic Center, they're not all from the 80s, some of them date back to the 50s. So the small pool at the existing Aquatic Center right now is from the 50s. Some of the amendment, some of the other amenities like the roof and the larger pool were built in the 80s, but some of them date back to the 50s. And then just a reminder that the Community Center building was originally constructed over 100 years ago, so it's it's served a good a good life and hopefully will continue on. So the, want to walk through the timeline a little bit. As I mentioned, we started with technical data. This is what we called the facility condition assessments. We did those in 2019, or actually, they were reported out in 2019. This is where they looked at what was the condition of the HVAC, all of the building amenities across all city buildings. But what we learned through that is two of our largest facilities that we have the community in quite a bit, the Aquatic Center and the Community Center, were not in great shape and needed some investment. So from that, we did what we called the Phase One Rec Building Feasibility Study, and that was the study. You heard the report out on this up at the second floor of the Community Center. For those of you who were on council back then, this is where the term, I think, from Ken Ballard got framed as doing nothing is not an option. You all saw what the investments in the buildings as they are would cost. And we also talked about the potential of what the savings might be if we took both of those buildings and combined them into one new building. And we also talked about what the community wants to see in recreation and the limitations on the space there. So we reported that out to you, and that was also the time where when when the council said, go forth and look at one new building to replace the Aquatic Center and Community Center, you also said, and don't forget the senior center and the library, because there's a lot of similarity with our, who we serve and what we do in those spaces. So then we moved into the concept planning, and we've called this the MAC PAC phase. This is where we had a 20 member community group advising us with an architect and talking about what the community would like to see in terms of space, what the ideal location would be, and they really ran through a number of instances, looking a little bit at costs, a little bit at operating costs, just really, we're calling that the concept plan because it did come up with a concept plan for what would be in these buildings and what wouldn't be in these buildings and and where they might go. So once we did that, we ran into the issue of city finances. And this was where it was kind of all hands on deck, everybody roll up your sleeves, we have some work we need to do before we can really talk to the public about building a new building. We needed to really do some work on our finances. So we put it on hold, and then the city council enacted the city service fee and then also took the fire district forward to voters. So that was the step that really led us to the next one, which was calling together a city manager work group and saying, hey, while all these things are going on, what do you advise us that's the most critical for us before we do take this public? And without a doubt, it was location, location, location. You have to have a location for the new rec center before you have this community conversation. It will make or break the conversation in some regards, and so they really felt like that was the most important thing. I will note that last slide that you saw from Duncan that had what the payoff is for our previous bonds and our existing bonds, that was another thing. They said you really need to get that data clear so that when those questions come up from the community, you have those answers. And so that's what we're doing now and what Duncan showed you. So then in 2023, council set a goal for 2024. I think this was your one unanimous goal to build a new rec center, and that was great. Then, you know, we entered into a memorandum of understanding for the Miller property as the location for the rec center. So we're still working with MAC Water and Light on negotiating that property, but that is the location that we are moving forward with. And just so everybody knows where that is, it's to the east of the existing MAC Water and Light headquarters, up the hill from Joe Dancer Park. And then, like I mentioned, in May, we brought the initial poll to you, which showed 52% support. We felt good about that, and that that number came about without doing any conscientious communication and outreach with the community. So we felt pretty good about that when we did that in May. And now, moving forward, what we picked up after that meeting we had with you is we created an engagement and communication plan. We developed the project page at iHeartMAC.org, and we developed the core messaging. So when you walk into our facilities now, you'll see posters like what we have in the room here. We take them with us to our events. We have the trifold brochures, which are back on the table. Anybody can grab one. And then, of course, if any counselors would like a button to wear with the QR code for the project, we have those available too. It was really important for us to develop that core messaging that went into that trifold brochure. That will live on. I'll talk about a survey in a minute, but that's really the base information that we're using to communicate with the community. And if you haven't gone to iHeartMAC.org to check out the project webpage, it really is changing every day. We're adding things, and Noel's here. She's doing a great job of supporting our graphic needs and our survey needs and the iHeartMAC.org work, so thanks, Noel. And then you may recognize a couple of these faces. We launched the online survey. We also went to all the summer fun events, including National Night Out with the chief there helping us with that. So we took to concerts, we, the staff was briefed on it. We really had a good time taking this out to the community. So that's what we did in June and July. And then in August, I mentioned Lisa Macy Baker. We want to thank her for writing into the viewpoints and really articulating what the need is and working on that. And then also, Visit McMinnville, we partnered with them in this month's edition of Crush to write an article there about the project as well. So we're continuing to build the momentum and spread the word about what this project is and connect the community with the information. So what's next? We're going to continue on that community education piece. We're going to work on tools for communication. This could be instructional videos. I think Council Garvin can probably talk about how difficult it is to communicate the difference between taxable value and real market value. And so Noel, we're working on how we can help people find that information out so they can look up exactly what this could mean to them. We'll also continue on our social media posts, and one of the great things about talking to people is we get to understand what questions they have about the project, what questions they have about the facilities, what's included, what's not included. So we'll continue to build the FAQs that we have on the iHeartMAC.org webpage and just strengthen those as much as we can. And then we're also working on the operational budget. This is a big component of how we're going to decide to move forward. This is something that we've talked about, and the Parks and Rec Open Space Plan is making sure that we know going into it what the operating costs would be related to ongoing maintenance, capital replacement, staffing, and all of those things. So we're going to work on that for the rec center in September and October. And then November, we plan to draft the second poll and work on that with Praxis and the pollster. We're going to continue to work on our information and outreach, and this is when we also will start having some potential larger meetings just dedicated solely to talking about the project with the community. And then in December, the second poll would ultimately be conducted. I've had some questions about the timing of that. Of course, we'll work on with Praxis on their recommended timeline to do that and figure out exactly when that rolls out, but we'll plan on doing the second poll then. Now you're going to start to see some similarities between the calendar that Duncan put up and what we're talking about. So you can see the language here is is starting to look the same. The measure design begins, the ballot title drafting happens. And we'll bring in those consultants that you just heard from and others, including Praxis, into the conversation to make sure we can navigate the next few months well. So that'll be in the new year.
Can I ask a question there? In Duncan's presentation, it said that we'd be drafting the language in December. Yours says we're surveying still in December and drafting language in January and with the February goal or, you know, needing to submit by February. Could you just clarify?
Yeah, I think it would be safe to say December, January, we're going to be bringing that stuff depending on your calendar and how we can get it forward to you, but we will start working on it before then. So yeah, we'll get that stuff to you sometime in the December, January. It kind of would help to have a little bit of the poll information back before we finalize that, so some of this will be iterative and ongoing, but that's approximately the timeline.
Thank you.
Most important timeline is the end of February.
Okay, and then we're going to go to Councilor Chinewith and then Council President Garvin.
What's the total cost the city is investing up to the point that we go to ballot?
Well, we don't know the answer to that yet because the maximum ad package, I think, was $200,000 for this project, so we haven't spent near that, and we aren't spending if we don't need to, so we're just continuing on that. One ad package that was approved in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe Praxis could answer this, but is there ability to do polling sooner than that December timeframe, or is the December timeframe picked out for a particular reason? Just remember, with the fire district, it seemed like we were always scrambling at the last minute to meet the next deadline and would like there to be a little bit of breathing room and not special council meetings to pass certain things if needed.
Sure, and I think Megan is on the line. I don't know if she can answer that on the go. Hi, Megan. If you want to weigh in on that December timeline for the poll.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. One of the reasons we targeted that is because it's after the presidential election in November. I know you all have some local elections going on. So that really is the vision there to be drafting that in November. I think we could certainly look at fielding it a little earlier, possibly in November, but as you know, you have to like work around the holidays at that time of the year. But if that's important to people, I think we could look at doing it in November.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilor Gary, and I will just say we have not yet canceled the second council meeting in November, although it is just a couple days before Thanksgiving. Councilor Gary.
Still for Megan, rough turnaround time to sort of create a poll, finalize a poll, deliver that, wrap up the results and get it back to us. What's a what's a rough turnaround time for something like that?
I would say you'd be surprised at how quick it can be when needed, but with a big project like this, we want to be really thoughtful in making sure we're right, asking the right questions. So that is something we would want at least a couple weeks to be drafting and make sure that all the right people have input in it, and again, that we're asking the right questions. So I think from start to finish, we're looking at a month.
Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? We'll hand it back over to you. Thank you, Director Muir.
Yep, thanks for clarifying the timeline, Muir. Okay, so in February, that again is one of the critical dates that we'll need to meet to meet, and then continuing on the messaging and building that kind of arsenal of public information that we have. And then with Praxis's help, we will do, follow some of the same procedures. This will look familiar in the fire districting that we did. We will be looking for the city-produced materials to have a safe harbor through the Secretary of State to make sure we're not getting into any trouble with the election law. So that will happen sometime in March. In April or May, that's when we'll start using that safe harbor or continue using that safe harbor communications. This is where digital ads run. This is where the fire district did a direct mail to all voters in the district, and we'll continue on the social media posts. But this is where it turns from any type of persuading to informing and educating and just the facts so that the city doesn't get into any issues with the election law. And of course, we can continue that with open houses and learning and listening sessions with the community. We'll follow that model in April and May. And then, as we mentioned, the election day will be May 20th, certified by June 19th, and just in case anybody is wondering, that is eight months, three weeks, and two days from now. So I have another part to really debrief a little bit on the survey, but I thought I'd stop and see if there are any questions about that timeline so far.
Council President.
Yeah, is there currently a group of users, pickleballers, swimmers, other users that are stepping up to the plate to form a PAC and fundraise from a private side that when the city has to transition to that informational stage, they can pick up the baton on the persuasion stage?
Yes, there is still a very interested and active group from that MAC PAC group that is growing, and I think Councilor Gary may have some more information about that, but yes, there is an active group that's excited to see this move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we found out from the survey, it closed Monday at midnight, was, and just as a refresher, this was the community oriented, not scientific poll like the way we did the May poll, but yet similar results. We saw those in the in the online survey. We saw those in the, in the online survey. The Rec Center was identified as the feature most likely to be used by over 40% of the respondents. That's out of the four elements, the library, Rec Center, Senior Center, and Parks. And then, almost 70% of respondents strongly support the city moving forward with the proposal of May 2025. Keep in mind, that is a higher number than what we saw when we did the scientific poll, and most of this engagement was done at our events where people know about Parks and Recreation in the library and are active and participating already. So that's why we want to do that second poll, that second scientific poll, to really keep testing these numbers, to see where we land. And then, one of the things that has come up in other communities is the, really being clear that those people who are paying property taxes in the city of McMinnville will get a reduction in any cost that they incur to participate in paid programs through this. So we do this a little bit now. You pay in-city fees, or you pay out-of-city fees for some of our programs. And we will be making that a part of the program going forward and educating those, because we do serve a large amount of folks that live outside the city. And the topic always comes up of, why don't I get a discount? And we often have to walk them through the property tax conversation about how that factors into the city budget and the Parks and Rec budget. But essentially, this is verification from the voters that they want that to continue so that they get a discount for paying the property tax on it. And that's it for the survey. We will post the full results online at iHeartMack.org. There are also a couple of fill-in-the-blank answers that, we did have some initial comments about whether or not people wanted additional taxes. We have concerns about that, and then we also had a lot of enthusiasm to do it now, it's time, move forward. So not unexpected that we would get a wide range of people commenting on that, but overall, we feel like it was a good survey. We had over 350 people participate in it. We did pick up on some survey fatigue when we went out, as we're asking people if they've taken a survey and they turn and run from us. We're clear, what we need to do is talk about the project, not necessarily point them towards the survey, but we feel good about what we checked in with the community on over the summer. And that's all we have for you. We'll be back November 12th at a work session to talk to you about the operational plan.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Council President?
On the billing the survey questions, this might be for Megan, but if we were to build those right after the election, those don't actually have to come back to council before polling. That's, or do we, yeah, we don't authorize those, do we?
No, the coun, the council does not approve or review the polling questions.
But is it possible to have polling data back by our December 10th council meeting, which is our first meeting in December?
We can certainly look at meeting that timeline and see how we can do that. Yeah, if that's, if that's what you'd like, we will try and make that happen.
I just, I mean, it's, it's not going to affect my schedule for special meetings in the first of the year, but just thinking back to how rushed things felt, I think the more room you can build and more extra runway you can build going into February, the happier everybody else on this dais is going to be.
Take that into account and fine tune the calendar a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Megan, anything to add on that? Okay. Thanks for that feedback.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, everybody, all consultants joining us online, as well as our city staff for continuing to bring this forward and keep the council and the community informed. I will adjourn the work session at 6:54 PM. We will take a six-minute break and start our regularly scheduled business meeting at 7:00 PM when the meeting is noticed for. Thank you. Okay, I will ask everyone to find their seats so we can begin the meeting. And I'll ask councilors to return to their seats as well. Thank you, counselor. Wonderful. Lovely to see so many familiar and kind faces in here. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to start by calling the August 27th, 2024 regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council to order, and I will ask our city recorder to do a roll call.
Council Gary.
Good evening.
Council Mace.
Present. Present.
Council Chenoweth.
Present.
Council Payne.
Here.
Council Peralta is absent this evening. Council President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here. Thank you. Now, if you are able, please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked our guest of honor today, Mr. Howie Harkema, to lead us in the pledge. Judge, if you'll, Mr. Harkema.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you want to stay right there, sir, I wouldn't mind, apparently. So I believe many of you are here tonight because, you know, that we are taking this occasion to honor the retirement of Mr. Howie Harkema, who has truly dedicated his life to public service, not only to the city of McMinnville, but to so many organizations and organizations that are focused on serving other residents in McMinnville. So not only serving himself, but serving others throughout his lifetime. And it is because of that that we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge your work, especially in your retirement. Now, I will tell you, this proclamation is much shorter than your resume. But we've hit some highlights. And so I would like to take a moment to proclaim today Howie Harkema Day, whereas he has served as the Executive Director of Champion Team, a mental health drop-in center in 2021, and whereas he's represented the tri-county area at the Fair Housing Council of Oregon from 2020 to 2023, and whereas he's been part of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force and Commission from 2017 on. And he has moved from committee member to ex officio member, whereas he has held meetings with Yamhaugh County mayors about homelessness, and whereas he has hosted television programs, speaking frankly, in How We Doin' from 2013 to '24, show that featured interviews with nonprofit leaders, political officials, and candidates. It also highlighted local art, music, and events. And in honor of these things, I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, Oregon, do hereby proclaim August 27th, 2024 as Howie Harkema Day, and in witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 27th day of August 2024. I would ask you to rise, if you're able, and applaud Mr. Harkema.
People at home can hear you.
So 17 years ago, I came out of the corporate world into this world, and it's been a rough stay, but I've seen many successes and I've seen many failures. I've seen ups and downs, and action and no action. But things are changing. People are being brought off the street, and through recovery, they're finding homes, they're finding apartments, and their lives are changed because of it. And all of you have been a part in all of this. And I, there are so many people to thank, it's impossible. I have worked with thousands and thousands of you all over the community and across all of Yamhaugh County and into the tri-county area, and I thank you for this acknowledgement. It's a little bit weird, but I'll, I'll accept it, and, and let's just keep moving forward. Keep moving forward with the things that are important to each of us, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you so much, Mr. Harkema. We are now moving into public comments. All members of the community are invited to provide public comment. Any interested audience members that would like to provide public comment this evening are asked to fill out the information card and provide it to our city recorder. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise-your-hand future feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you when your time is up. If you are providing comment to the council, we ask that you provide your name and the city that you live in for the record. Do we have anyone signed up for public testimony this evening, public comment?
Yes. Before we start, I do want to state for the record that Tamsin Kramer did submit an attachment with her public comment that has already been emailed to the council and will make a part of the amended packet tomorrow. First person is Tamsin Kramer.
Thank you. Welcome back, Tamsin.
I live here in McMinnville, and I wanted to start off showing you guys, I did it. I got my peer's support.
I love this, Tamsin, use the mic for us so everyone at home can applaud you, too.
So I, this one, I put, I wrote it down this time, so I got organized thought. It says, "Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I stand before you to address a critical issue that affects our community deeply, the disconnect between homeless individuals and the communities they reside near. This connect is not just a matter of physical distance or economic disparity. It is a psychological and social divide that has profound implications for how we address homelessness. There's a serious gap in how homeless individuals are perceived by the communities they live near. I intentionally say near and not within because often, they are not truly welcomed or integrated into these communities. They are seen as outsiders, not as neighbors, and this perception drives much, much of the isolation and stigma they face. This perception is rooted in deeper unconscious bias. Studies have shown that when people are shown images of different groups, their brains typically respond with recognition, lighting up areas associated with social interaction. However, when shown images of homeless individuals, the brain's response, response is markedly different. Instead of recognizing them as fellow human beings, the brain reacts as if encountering a threat, activating regions typically associated with danger. The unconscious bias has a real-world consequence. It leads to social isolation, avoidance, and a lack of empathy and compassion. We see this manifested in NIMBYism, where communities resist efforts to help the homeless in hate crimes and in sabotage of initiatives aimed at providing assistance and support. We need to challenge the common misconceptions about homelessness that perpetuate this disconnect. One pervasive belief is that homeless individuals choose this lifestyle because they don't want to take responsibility for their lives. This narrative suggests they refuse help and resources out of laziness or defiance. Another harmful narrative is the idea of the bootstrap mentality, where someone who once experienced homelessness claims they were able to overcome it on their own. This dismisses the complex and varied factors that keep others trapped in chronic homelessness. Finally, there's the stereotype that all homeless individuals are drug addicts or mentally ill, beyond help and unworthy of our support. But these narratives ignore a crucial aspect of this issue, the impact of self-perception. When society constantly tells someone they are worthless, it is only a matter of time before they internalize that belief. Homeless individuals often see themselves as hopeless, broken, and undeserving of care, which only deepens their isolation and despair. which only deepens their isolation and despair. So why do some people fall into chronic homelessness and some people manage to escape it quickly? That's... That's in the way that our brains are wired, starting from early childhood. Our experiences, especially from a young age, shape the connections in our brains, determining how we perceive the world and respond to it. I'm kind of out. I'll just email the rest of this to you guys, sorry. I just... I have more organized thought, thank you, you guys. I attribute that a lot to your willingness to listen.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for coming back, and thank you for your... Thank you for your comments this evening. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes. Next is Sonia Gonzalez Sutter.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you for being here. I'll just remind you to use a microphone so folks at home can hear you and to state your name and the city you reside in for the record.
Hi, my name is Sonia Sutter. I am the Operations Manager at St. Barnabas Soup Kitchen. I feed the homeless Monday through Friday. Today, I had a lady come in tonight, and I hadn't seen her a long time, and you need to... Her story is very sad. I try not to cry. She is someone who used to live here a long time ago, and she is 72. She's blind, in one eye, deaf, scared, and is in a truck. And I met her tonight, a rental truck. She's living on the streets. She has no place to go. She is... She has it. She cannot be... She's got a chronic disease... illness, not chronic, and she has no place to go, no place to be safe. There is no one here to help her in this time of need. We need to open the community center to have somebody there seven days a week, Monday, seven days a week, from nine to seven, to help the homeless, to help somebody who has a place to stay. And she's not addicted. She doesn't do drugs. Not all homeless people are drug addicts. She doesn't know drugs. She does nothing. She's scared out of her mind. She's willing to go to jail just to have a roof over her head, and that is uncalled for when we have the community center and we have it to house and shelter. You know, it's a community center to help the community. There's something should be done, because that is... There needs to be something for these people who are not drug addicts, who are not. Something for everybody, but this is something that needs to be taken care of. That's it.
Thank you so much for your time. While we don't do back and forth during public comment, I will ask that we get an update on the Navigation Center, the 36-bed Lowbury Emergency Shelter that we have been expecting to open here during staff reports. Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
That's everyone that signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Okay. Thank you all so much for your comments and for coming this evening. We now have a presentation from our municipal court judge, Arnold Poole, and I would welcome you to this seat you're unfamiliar sitting in here. Thank you for being here. Counsel Chenoweth would like to know what your citation was, sir.
I am... I'm working it off with community service. I submitted a bunch of stuff, and it's in the packet. I believe it starts at page five, and I don't have a big speech. I'm just going to go over this stuff, and kind of like this gentleman that we recognized tonight, I'm just going to explain to you how we're doing. But if you look at page five, our software program, it basically is allowed to... We can figure out the number of defendants per court session, number of cases, and number of charges. So one of the clerks printed that out for me by... For the last year, and then I consolidated that down by month. Looking at these, you can see we're fairly busy. Basically, the number of files, cases, you know, so there's a file folder just like this. We handled 3,008 between last July and July of 2023. So just to give you a perspective, and in no way a comparison, but using the statistics from the Oregon Judicial Department, for 2023, Yamhill County Circuit Court, and I know Judge Easterday is going to correct me if I'm wrong, but there were 1,094 misdemeanor filings. So you compare that to what we're doing here in municipal court. Looking at those same statistics, and again, I'm kind of comparing sort of like apples to peaches. They're both fruit and whatnot, but looking at the filings in circuit courts throughout the state, we are busier than 32 county circuit courts on misdemeanor filings alone. So these guys are earning their money over here, Jason Carver Hall and his folks. And I know there was concern at one point that folks thought that the prohibited camping charges would balloon in this courtroom. I really don't see it. The only real difference I see between the months is if somebody was... A critical person was ill and we couldn't hold court that day, I guess that critical person's me, and they couldn't replace me. I remember once I came down with COVID like the day before in holidays, but for the most part, there's not that much difference between one month and another. Same with violations. Adding it up, we dealt with 1,786 cases, and violations are going to be traffic stuff. So both... That tells me that both the police are doing their job writing the citations, and court staff is doing their job going through it. Looking at the next page, I just want to go over some of the highlights. The biggest thing, and I want to put out my congratulations to our court staff, our prosecutor, our library director over here who helped, and certainly Jennifer, our finance director, putting together grant proposal to the federal government. We'll find out sometime next month if it was passed. One thing I put down there, one of the items that the grant might cover is a software, a court-centered software upgrade, but also I caution, because you guys approve that as part of the budget, so maybe we might be able to save some money or not. Excuse me. The other thing that is really going well is our jail arraignments. We've had some changes over at the sheriff's office, and it's worked out really well. Last year, we were tickled to death to be able to go to the jail and take care of business, but the thing was, they only had time available for us at 3:00 in the afternoon. Well, that's the middle of our day. We'd have to shut court down, run down to the jail, do our jail folks, and then come back. And right now, I can't emphasize enough how helpful our new jail commander, Captain Brown and his staff, have been. It's been fantastic. And so what they've done is they've opened the jail up to us at 8:00 in the morning so we can get out of the jail, I can do arraignments, I can make a decision on whether to hold somebody or not, give them to a lawyer or not, or to let them consider the city's offer. Most folks actually consider the city's offer, and when that happens, I'm able to do a sentencing right then and there. Now, there's a statute that says that if someone is taken into custody, they have to see a magistrate within 32 hours. So because of that, and because of my own schedule with my day job, between Jason's folks and talking and him coordinating with the jail staff and getting me on the phone, we're still able to do it. He's able to call and put me on speakerphone right there in the jail, and we're able to just do basically all that other stuff and then let the paperwork catch up. So this is working out really well, which means that when we put out warrants to have people picked up for an missing court or something like that, they're being held and it's being taken care of. The other thing, the sheriff's office is actually making a room. They had used it for something else, and now they're going to use it for professional visits and court visits, and they're opening it up to us and the folks in Newburgh. Speaking of Jason, he came to me a few months back and said, you know, we might be able to change the docket around a little bit, because traditionally, we've had traffic court on one Wednesday, then criminal court the next Wednesday, traffic court like that. And Jason said, you know, we could probably talk to the police department and have them cite people, not on this day, this first Wednesday, but the first Tuesday, and then me and the court staff as part of what we call the Violations Bureau, they have authority to make, just like when you go to a circuit court and you can talk to the clerk and pay your traffic ticket. We can deal with them, and if they still want to see the judge, we can reset it for the date that you're going to be here. That's huge, because what that has done is that's opened up a whole new Wednesday for us. So we're using that for criminal cases and maybe whittle down some of the cases per court session, but also opens up time for our specialty court, which leads me to my next topic. And let me tell you about our ad hoc specialty court. And I got to tell you, I am so pleased. We have folks from Encompass, and I see Kerry Martin sitting back there, and the folks from Provoking Hope, and we even have a member of Yamhill County Mental Health come, and they're there at the same time. And as a judge, it's so nice for me to point to someone who's sitting right where I'm at, or actually, they're standing at the time, and say, turn around, you see that nice person right there who's waving at you? That's the person you need to see before you leave. The things that these folks have done, primarily for the homeless, has been absolutely wonderful. And let me give you a good example. We have one gentleman, he had something like 27 cases with us, and it wasn't because he was a bad person. He has an organic brain injury, and he can't remember more than five minutes back. And we managed to get him into court, and we wanted to set him up to go over to mental health and start some kind of treatment with them, and Kerry Martin, bless her soul, said, okay, I know he's going to be across the street having breakfast at the Baptist Church on that morning. Me or one of my people will pick him up and bring him to court. And they did, and we got him set up to start a system of mental health. And with that, our prosecutor, God bless her soul, she does such a great job, she said, you know what? You've done this, we wanted you to do it. This one C misdemeanor that we're never going to collect on or anything, I'm just going to dismiss it. So he has an incentive, and so he's got a reason to do stuff. So it's been really good. We've been really pleased with our community partners, and we've developed an award. We made up a certificate suitable for framing. I sign it. The mayor's been gracious enough to sign it. We gave our first one a couple of months ago to Kyle Johansson from Provoking Hope. He's been coming to our court for years, and we wanted to give him some feedback of what we thought. And actually, we even called up the newspaper, and they showed up and did an article about it, but he was over the moon, excited about it, and we want to do that more and more with the folks that are really helping us out. Last year, I told you we didn't have court rules, and I can report to you that we do now. So now, new court clerks, new lawyers in the area, they got something that they can look at to see how we do stuff, rather than serving like an apprenticeship or something like that, trying to find everything out. Excuse me. It's a new tongue, it's not broken in, I have to whet it down often. We had an expungement workshop earlier in the month to help folks, you know, clean up their records a little bit for housing, to get better jobs, things like that. It seemed like a really good idea. We have a good representation from the legal community. I had, I want to say, four defense lawyers here to help folks. We didn't have any customers, but you know what? We got it set up, we can do it again. Maybe we'll do it next year with a lot more advertising. Excuse me. And then finally, our challenges have been with... For us, with mental health concerns. I've kind of pushed the envelope a little bit, because I've been issuing orders to the county mental health department, and they've been gracious enough to accept them, to actually go to the jail or see somebody in the community to offer them what's called community restoration. Typically, you do that in circuit court to help somebody to be able to aid and assist in their own defense. It's basically voluntary. It's... If nothing else, it gives people contact with the people that they need to have contact with. And then we've had some folks that were really ill, dangerously ill. There was one individual who was almost attacking, physically attacking people in the street, and I filed a magistrate's notice. Circuit Court was kind enough to pick it up after the county mental department jumped on it and did an investigation. I'm pleased to report that that person was committed, was sent to the state hospital, has since been released on what's called a trial visit. It's kind of like when you go to prison, you're released early, it's called parole. When you left, leave the state hospital, it's called a trial visit. And some of us have run into this person a couple of times, and it's been good, not having any of the kind of problems that we've had before. But we're still... This is a challenge. We're still dealing with this with help that we're getting from all of these folks. It's wonderful. That's basically all I have, other than I'm here to answer questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you so much. Looking to both sides of the dais here for anyone that would like to ask questions or provide comment. Okay, well, thank you very much for your time today, Judge, and always lovely to see you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I'll start with Counselor Payne this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one, and it's just that the Landscape Review Committee's last meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items. A meeting will be put together probably in the next month or so for Landscape Review to review code amendments.
Thank you. Counselor Anki.
Affordable Housing will meet on tomorrow at 10:00. We're going to be discussing, I think, different, kind of maybe a different allocations on the construction excise tax. At any rate, that will be our topic of discussion. I did attend the Juliet House opening. It was very nice, beautiful, new addition, very exciting. In regard to YCAP, I have several different things from the leadership report that I'd like to talk about. YCAP has engaged CFO selections. This was put on hold after the last search firm could not find sufficient candidates in two rounds of searching. A key challenge with this position for YCAP is the salary range needed to place a qualified candidate. YCAP offers a hybrid work option for this position and extensive benefits, but we're working with a third-party company to review the wage range. During the search, we will continue to maintain the interim CFO services with CFO selections and are hoping for a six-week timeline for permanent placement. In regard to indoor place, we have worked closely with the city of McMinnville to see construction phase with faculty through. As of the last week, we have only achieved temporary occupancy and are waiting on critical work, mostly regarding plumbing permitting, to be complete. This delay with faculty's work has contributed to a significant delay. to be complete. This delay with factored work has contributed to a significant delay for YCAP staff to engage the last phase of the facility work that is required before services start. Landscaping and getting the staff onsite to train. We are still advocating and planning at every turn to have operations live by October, but know the reality as we get farther from the origin of June deadline of getting access to the site, we may have further delays in starting services. The city has been engaged in a collaborative partner sharing the same goals through this process. They're very happy with the city in general. YCAP has engaged Gallatin Public Affairs as a communication firm to support our team in sharing the work of the agency more effectively. We have a contract with them through December and we'll reevaluate that time if we want to continue. And finally, the executive director will be taking maternity leave in the next five weeks. There is a team of executive-level directors that are already meeting and planning for coverage across the agency. This includes Amber Hansen-Moore, the deputy director, who will be the board liaison, Laverne Pitts, development director, Alina Bergen, human resources director, and Michelle Whiting is the office director. And that's about all I've got as far as YCAP's concerned.
Thank you very much. Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. Historic Landmarks Committee did not have a meeting. I mentioned two weeks ago that we are finally going to bid. Parkway Committee is excited to say that we're finally going to bid on the 2A phase of the bypass, which is the interchange 217 in Newburgh at Wilsonville Road. So we are seeing movement. We're going to see that project kick off hopefully next year. MEVLC met and we discussed the updates on the noble grant with workforce development that we had housed within MBDP and some successes we've had with apprentice program and job fair. And then, of course, the concerns of how we'll continue to fund that going forward. That's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Gary.
DEIAC in between meetings, but we'll be interviewing candidates for upcoming vacancies. And then MURAC, same in between meetings, but did conduct interviews to fill vacancies. And then Affordable Housing, I'll be joining in tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Visit McMinnville. We had some CEO interviews last week and our final two candidates will be onsite in the city next Wednesday, visiting with staff and the board for planning on our final candidate and making a job offer. Both were great candidates and I think both could do an exceptional job. Right now, it's just finding the right fit. And Fire District, we celebrated our 150th on Sunday. You'll see a new white medic unit outside the fire station. Our second one of those will be coming up from Eugene tomorrow. And once they get licensed, you'll see them running around. So you'll see red and white ambulances, as well as we are supposed to have one of our new engines get shipped out tomorrow from, I believe, Illinois. So we should have it here middle to end of September. And that'll be another new look for citizens around. It's a commercial chassis so we can go around to local parts stores and get parts and it won't be proprietary parts from Pierce. As well as we brought a mechanic on full-time staff, which we haven't had at the fire station since Dwight Stern retired a little over a decade ago. And our mechanic is Brad Stern, his son. Airport Commission, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I believe you guys passed a lease agreement for a tenant out at the Comcast building, which is much-needed revenue for the airport. So thank you for that. And YCOM hasn't met. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to continue on the list of vacancies, which we have been talking about in here a little bit. So we did conduct interviews for MURAC. And now we have openings on, in addition to DIAC, Historic Landmarks Committee Planning Commission, and then several of our project advisory committees. We have, over the last couple of years, been seeing a really high volume of volunteer turnout applying for those. And we would love to keep that trend going. So strongly encouraging members of the public to check those out on our website. The RFQ for, requests for the RFQ close this Friday, I believe. This weekend, of course, we have the airshow. And this past weekend, we were able to support the chamber in Lemonade Day. I think it was record attendance this year. If I remember correctly, there were 490 youth involved in putting on over 70 lemonade stands. And Lemmy, the lemon head, and I were able to head out and taste a lot of lemonade, also get a couple bracelets and some magnets, because there was a lot of art at the lemonade stands this year, and some face paint. That was fun. But the program encourages, it teaches kids how to build a budget, set their pricing, and then encourages them to make a little, save a little, and give a little. And so many of those booths support local nonprofits or local initiatives as well. And lastly, I was able to co-host a small mayor's sustainability tour with the League of Oregon Cities last week. And we had a lot of local representation and it was great to talk about how we can be approaching a variety of issues regionally. And with that, we'll go to city staff. City manager, Jeff Towery, to start.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. And David Lightenberg, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from the legal department tonight.
Jennifer Quayre, our finance director.
All quiet in finance as well. Thanks.
Parks and Recreation.
I think you've heard enough from me tonight, but thank you for your time earlier in the work session. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Berger, library director.
It's not quiet here. I have come here previously to talk to you about our Yam Hill Community Cares Organization grant that we received to build up our library of things. And I have brought a few examples, just to show you some of the things that you can check out at the library. I'd like to point out that these are the things that are not circulating at this time. So things like the ice cream makers and the Ninja Creamy, if any of you know, you can get one of those at the library, and the ukuleles and drums and whatnot were not available for me. But...
You made us dinner?
I've got a portable air pump available for checkout. I've got an infrared thermometer available for checkout. This is actually a canning kit with all the things that you would need for canning, including an instruction booklet on how to do it. All comes together. But my favorite of the evening...
Can you play the ditty from Grease since, you know, Very Current's playing a gallery right now?
I actually have not practiced on this yet. I'm trying to decide if I'm going to either go bike riding, pump up my tires and go bike riding, or do my canning right now, or just work on the xylophone. It's a tough, tough choice.
Well, you might want to check with Gallery and see if they need that xylophone for their production of grease, because, you know, it's an iconic part there at the beginning.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much. Chief of Police, Matt Scales.
I've got a couple of things. As you had mentioned, Mayor, Saturday, Sunday, Mondays, the International Air Show is going to be out here with the Thunderbirds. So we're staffed up and we will be heavily involved out there. Appreciate our partnerships with Fire District and Yamwood County Emergency Management's been great. I'd also like to report that the Crewee-McMinnville event on Saturday was, had a chance to briefly touch base with Corporal Meyerhofer, was out there, said there was zero issues. So that's a plus. That goes to show how well-managed that event is. Also, just a couple quick capital items that I had mentioned, our mobile surveillance trailer's been ordered. That's a $90,000 grant from the state. It's actually ordered and it should be completed by September 5th. We just missed the airshow. But that will be a significant force multiplier for our team, as well as, we've been waiting and for a long time, I know our IT department's been waiting for updated video systems in our patrol cars in the Fleet 3. The Axons have arrived and we'll schedule those to be installed. And it's going to be a significant relief to our evidence and it's going to be a significant improvement for our officers' experience as they work with the body cams as well. So super thankful for that. Wanted to give Counselor Minkie a thank you. Her and Sunrise Road Erie, we're at the PD today. We appreciate the lunches that were provided at noon and then at 6:00 tonight. And I know you'll be back tomorrow as well. Super appreciative and it does not go unnoticed. And we wanted to thank you and your group like we always are.
You're most welcome, all of you.
Thank you. And I'll reiterate what you said. I just heard tons of positive feedback all weekend at Crewee-McMinnville. People were very happy. Pizza was great and hot dogs were great, too. Just, no, in addition to the cars. Mr. Hunsaker, Public Works Director.
I have a couple tonight. First one is wastewater. So we are working on our wastewater facility plan with our consultant, Jacob's Engineering. We will be doing a study of our mixing zones where our effluent discharges into the South Yam Hill River on Thursday. As part of that, we are putting red dye into our effluent. So there will be red dye visible in the South Yam Hill River at the treatment plant and downstream. We've let Lafayette know this dye is not harmful to people or wildlife. It doesn't stain, but it will be visible Thursday morning into the early afternoon. So just want you all to know, we're going to get this out on social media as well to let people know.
Are you going to provide some sort of a copy for the council for emails that come in that we can easily get accurate information and respond in a timely way for the emails that we will most likely get?
Yes. Noel is working on something that sounds a lot better than anything I could write. And then the other one I have is, US Department of Transportation awarded a grant today for $15 million to 17 communities in the North Willamette area for the installation of EV chargers. We are one of those 17 communities. It's to install 500 EV chargers, approximately 125 locations across those 17 communities. This happened before I got here, so I'm still learning about it. Jeff might know more than I do, but I will be updating once I know a little bit more on that. But it's pretty exciting. And a big thank you to City of Tuolton and their staff who took the lead on the grant application and are going to be managing that project.
Great. Thank you. I'm just anticipating one question about the dye. Could you speak to the toxicity of the dye?
It's not toxic. It's not harmful to people. It's not harmful to animals. It's perfectly safe. It's just something that allows us to see how well it's getting stirred up.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Court Supervisor, Jason Carvajal.
And it feels like karaoke night here. I think just shouldering off of Judge Poole's remarks, we are anxiously awaiting a word on that federal grant. There would be $1.2 million over the next four years that would impact the court greatly on how we operate day-to-day. And so we're, like I said, just anxiously waiting to, fingers crossed on this one.
Thank you. We have a question there? Yeah.
Is there city matching dollars needed for that grant if we do get it, like some other grants?
It was a $900,000 grant with us kicking in a quarter.
Okay. Thank you.
And what's the, when will we find out? I don't see it in the packet.
It's been anticipated for September 1st, but we're just waiting to see.
Okay.
And then a question for Jeff on the EV chargers. Is that the project that Matt Deppi was contracted on before he came on as a planner?
No, that was actually a different, smaller grant. This is a grant that the City of Tuolton coordinated 17 communities to participate in, substantially supported by PGE as well.
Are these Level 2 chargers?
They're Level 2 chargers, yes.
Yeah.
And how many will be in McMinnville?
We don't know yet. That has yet to be worked out. So locations and numbers per community still to be determined. And once we know that, we'll share that information back.
Last question. Are we the most furthest south community of the 17 from the I-5 corridor?
We are not.
Okay.
Can't remember who's further south. Woodburn. Salem is in the mix, too. I think so.
And City Recorder, Claudia Sisneros.
Yes, two quick things. City offices will be closed on Monday in observance of Labor Day. And then our alley grand opening is next Friday. If you haven't checked out the amazing murals down there. I just got to see them last week. And again, they're phenomenal. Recommend everyone going. But the grand opening is next Friday.
Thank you. And Community Development Director, Heather Richards.
Yes, Goodie. We have a couple of things, so I apologize in advance. The project advisory committees that we're recruiting for right now is the transportation system plan update, our Southwest area plan, and our downtown master plan update. So if people are interested in those, I encourage you to go to iHeartMac or the city website, or you can call the planning department for applications. In terms of the navigation center, to follow up on Counselor Minkie's comments, the city has been the project construction manager of this facility. It's going to be a low barrier emergency shelter with 37 beds for single males on one floor, single females on another floor, and families on a third floor. It will also have a day-use facility. So to the public comment we heard tonight, there will be, there will be a place for people to go, for day-use facility, to do laundry, to take showers, to access food, and to access other services as well. And we are on schedule to open that up in the fall with YCAP as the operator. Jody Christensen has been the project manager for that and has been doing this excellent job of moving that forward. I wanted to bring you up to date on where we're at with our housing needs analysis that we, and economic opportunity analysis that we submitted to the state. The processes we submit to the state, the director of the Department of Land Conservation Development reviews it and chooses to make a decision or move it on to the Land Conservation Development Commission, which operates kind of like the State Planning Commission. Prior to the director making a decision, there is an opportunity for objections to be made by people who participated in the local process. There were two different parties that submitted objections to the city's adoption of those products. One party was Mark Davis. He submitted three objections relative to the parkland need that was identified in the appendix of the economic opportunity analysis. And then Thousand Friends and Friends of Yam Hill County partnered together and submitted 10 objections to the housing needs analysis, economic opportunity analysis, and buildable lands inventory. The director reviewed all the objections. We provided a response. They reviewed our response and they issued a decision. Their decision was that they remanded one of the objections back to the city. It was the parkland need objection by Mark Davis and then upheld all the other objections in favor of the city. So we'll be bringing you the remand for that parkland need here. We have it currently scheduled for September 24th. We agree with what the remand is and we'll be bringing that forward. After the director issues their decision, there is the opportunity for people to appeal the director's decision to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And both parties have submitted appeals. We learned of that last week. So Thousand Friends and Friends of Yam Hill County submitted an appeal with six objections in it for LCDC to consider. And then Mark Davis also submitted an appeal with two objections and also upholding the director's decision to remand one of his previous objections back to the city. So the next step is the Land Conservation Development Commission will hold a hearing and a meeting on those appeals. We expect it to be in October. And then based on that, we will then make decisions on moving forward with the housing needs analysis and the housing land need studies and the land use efficiencies that we're currently under a work plan with the... Use Efficiencies that were currently under a work plan with the state to do within certain timeframes. We've been in discussion with the state about that work plan and have had close conversations with them about this process and how it impacts our deadlines in that work plan, and so we're continuing to manage and monitor that as we move this forward. Another discussion that's underway right now, though, is we are, we need to do the housing production strategy, and I wanted to let you know that the Project Advisory Committee had a really thoughtful and mindful discussion last week. It was their first meeting, and they met with a consultant team and staff. We will be doing a work session with you and the Planning Commission, a joint work session on September 10th, to go over the housing production strategy and then what we need to do to put that together. And the discussion that the PAC had, there was a good article in the News Register about it as well. And then finally, the Planning Commission has been in dialogue about transitional housing code amendments. They were developed by the Affordable Housing Commission Committee and then transferred to the Planning Commission to review for code amendments and a recommendation to you as the city council. That work session took place two weeks ago, and at the work session, the Planning Commission directed staff to go out and do some more public engagement on the transitional housing. So we'll be working with our communications manager and other city staff to put that together, and I wanted to let the public know that we'll be putting discussions together about the transitional housing proposal over September and October, and we'll get dates out for that as soon as we know. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now go to our consent agenda, as every counselor had an opportunity to review, of course, but does any counselor need to recuse themselves from the consent agenda, or would any counselor like to have an item pulled off of the consent agenda? Not seeing any, I'd entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Minkie and a second from Council President. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. And the consent agenda has been adopted unanimously. We will now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5147. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Not hearing any, we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5147. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will City Attorney David Lightenberg please read the ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 5147. An ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 12.04, to modernize city practices with regard to engineering fees and coordinate with adopted engineering fee schedule.
Thank you. Do you have any additional presentation, Mr. Lightenberg?
Just very briefly, I would like to comment that this is just a housekeeping matter. We are clearing up some very old code here, mostly that charged the city recorder with some of the documentation and efforts made in this chapter that should rightfully belong with the city engineer. That modernizes that practice. It's largely been going that way anyway. Also, a reference to a fee in the code that is wildly out of date that's being fixed by this reference, which would now reference the fee schedule that you have already passed.
All right. Thank you. Is there any council discussion at this time, or would anyone like to make a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance number 5147?
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Minkie, a second from Council President Garvin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Ordinance number 5147 has passed on its first reading unanimously, and I'll now ask the city attorney, David Lightenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5147. An ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 12.04, to modernize city practices with regard to engineering fees and coordinate with adopted engineering fee schedule.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5147.
Second.
I have a motion from Council President and a second from Counselor Geary, and I would ask our city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Minkie?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And the ordinance is adopted unanimously, and I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 7:55 PM.